I'm going to call October 24th, 2022 City Council Meeting in order. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll make a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
Second.
Motion made second, under the consent agenda, I'd like to add item J supplemental payment summary.
Second that.
With the motion and the second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We have an agenda. Presentation Sheriff Report Derrick.
Good evening Council. I'm Derrick Peters, I'm a lieutenant in our patrol division. September had a total of 464 calls for service, which is up approximately 56 calls from the previous month of October. Excuse me, August. Deputies responded to four burglaries and nine thefts. We made a total of eight custodial arrests for miscellaneous violations. And our traffic enforcement efforts resulted in the issuance of 30 traffic citations matching the previous month of August. On the 5th of September 2022 at 7:26 PM Deputy Madsen responded to an alarm at the Dollar General store in the city of East Bethel. On arrival deputies located a shattered front window. The deputies made entry and cleared the building but found nobody inside. It appeared to responding deputies that someone had used a patio chair to break the front window of the business. There was blood located at the scene which prompted our staff to request our crime scene unit to the scene to process the blood for a possible DNA match. The store manager arrived and advised that she did not believe anything had been taken. Our crime scene unit arrived and collected the evidence that had been left behind. The investigation continues as we are awaiting lab test results of the blood that had been left behind at the scene.
Lieutenant Peters, is that the one on Viking or is that the one on Highway 65?
It's the one on Viking.
On Viking?
Yeah.
Thank you.
On the 7th of September at 15:27 hours Deputy Lynch responded to a theft from a motor vehicle in the 19800 block of Jackson Street Northeast. The reporting party stated that his Ruger handgun had been stolen out of his vehicle which had been parked in the driveway. The reporting party was unsure if his vehicle had been locked or not, but there had been no signs of forced entry into the van itself. In speaking with the complainant Deputy Lynch learned that there had been surveillance footage from one of his neighbors that showed an unknown person wearing a hood and a mask standing in their driveway. These photos had been uploaded to the East Bethel Facebook page and it was not determined if they were related to this actual break-in or theft. The stolen firearm was entered into our law enforcement database as stolen and the investigation is also continuing as well. On the 24th of September at 19:55 hours Deputy Lynch made a traffic stop in the 200 block of Highway 65 Northeast for a speed violation. He approached the vehicle and spoke with the driver who was advised of the reason for the stop. While speaking with the driver he noticed a female sitting in the backseat on top of a set of folded down seats not wearing her seatbelt. He identified both parties and ran them through our law enforcement databases. He learned that this female had an active Danko order preventing her from having contact with the male. Deputy Lynch arrested the female and transported her to jail. The male was verbally warned for the moving violation. And finally, on the 26th of September deputies Johnson and Quam were dispatched to the Hidden Haven Golf Course on a burglary report. On arrival deputies spoke with an employee who directed deputies to the north side of the business where there had been forced entry on one of the windows. A pane of glass appeared to have been forcibly removed or pried off. Upon making entry the deputies cleared the business but didn't find anyone inside. Hidden Haven employees directed our deputies to two game machines that had their cash drawers pried open. The tills had been left alone. Deputies requested our crime scene unit again to the location and process the scene for any fingerprints or touch DNA. The investigation into this burglary is also ongoing and will proceed when results of the processed evidence is known. So as you can note here from my monthly brief, we've had a rise in burglaries and thefts. Please remember to lock your car doors and report anything suspicious to 911. Recently our investigators have been successful in obtaining suspect information from some of the Ring doorbells and cameras that folks have installed on their houses. Some of those systems are very inexpensive and easy to install. And just as a point of reference for everyone, these cameras are a good deterrent for these thefts and they can be utilized in criminal prosecution. So it's a good safety mechanism if you're so inclined and if you have questions feel free to call us and we can assist you in that regard. Thank you again for the opportunity.
Any questions from the council?
With Halloween coming up next Monday I believe, do you have any advice for residents on having a safe Halloween?
Yeah, well being that it's so dark out now at this time of year, it suggests wearing a light for the kids trick or treating. We've got some extra patrols that'll be out that evening as well. We'll have a contingent of our reserve deputies, they're our volunteers and they'll be out as well to maintain that visible presence in our neighborhoods. So again, stay well lit. I know it's very difficult for motor vehicles passing at, you know, any sort of speed to see smaller children out there trick or treating, so wear a light. Stay with people that you know. I would go in groups obviously, you know, there's power in numbers certainly, so enjoy, have fun, but think ahead as well. So be safe and call us if you see anything suspicious or something just doesn't seem right, please call 911.
Derrick, I've noticed more deputies on 22, is the speed getting carried away on 22 a little bit?
You know, we have seen an uptick in the speeds. 22 has always been a racetrack. We always go in cycles and I think, you know, we got into the fall time, it was busy in the summer, but then the fall, again, it's starting to increase. So again, as a point of reference, please note that we'll be out there, we'll have a visible presence. And any traffic stops we make are usually either handled by a verbal warning or written warning or citation. Our goal is to change the bad driving conduct that we see out on our roads, that's what we do day in and day out. So it's much better to slow down rather than get stopped and be delayed, further delayed to your destination. Whether, you know, when you could have been traveling the speed limit, made it there quicker than being stopped by a officer on the street.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council? Any questions from our audience?
Can I ask a question?
Yes sir, absolutely.
I filed a report with your department on September 21st after noticing two peoples, or a guy stealing some signs, campaign signs. And at that point I'd only lost about 35 of mine, now I'm up over 50.
Okay.
So could you just mention in the public record that there have been reports to the Anoka County Sheriff's Department about the theft of campaign signs and that it's a misdemeanor?
Yes, yes sir.
Could you please?
Absolutely.
Is that not being recorded?
Sure, sure. So there have been reports regarding sign thefts, am I correct sir? Okay, whereabouts?
All over the place.
Okay, all right, all right. Is there any extra patrol that we can offer or any other areas that we should be paying attention to?
Well, I wish I could nail it down to particular areas across from the East Bethel Fire Station number one. I've had to replace the signs three times so far.
Okay.
And I've got enough to cover a fourth and a fifth, which I'm sure is coming up. I don't think it's logical, I mean, I give people the benefit of the doubt, even thieves, that they're sensible enough not to do it the busiest times of day. You know, they might do it on the way home from the bar in the middle of the night or something like that.
Sure.
I couldn't rather for that. But anyway, that's been happening a lot. Between four of us, it's well over 200 signs.
Well, thank you for letting us know.
It's amount to a fair bit of money.
Thank you sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, thanks Derrick.
Thank you.
Next up is our new fire chief Rodney Sanol.
Good evening Council.
Evening.
I have your September fire report. In the month of September, we responded to 73 calls. Of those 73 calls, 52 were medicals, two were accidents, one, 11 were alarms, two were smoke and four others, there are four other calls. We also had a house fire in September, I do believe September 4th. And that the cause of that is still under investigation. We had mutual aid from our other departments to help us out. As of today, the DNR has not issued a burning ban at all. I do expect one to come probably by the end of the week because it is so dry out there and this little bit of rain we got today does not help. So if you're having a wrecked fire, please remember it's a 3x3 fire and you can only burn wood in it. Please do not burn leaves or vegetation from your garden. Those can go to the compost piles in Coon Rapids or Lionel Lakes. And as of today too, we have ran 731 calls. We are 44 calls ahead of last year's numbers, so we're on uptake. Given the current rate with about 70 calls a month, we will hit about 910 calls for this year. And that is all I have for you. Is there any questions?
In the response calls, there's about 10 or 11 incident types called alarms. What, is that like a smoke alarm going off or some other kind of alarm?
Yes, Councilmember, they are smoke, fire alarms or smoke detectors going off to homes and that. And that our duty officer runs those, so it's only one person going on them calls.
Okay, just seems like there's a.
There has been an increase in that number.
Yeah.
We went from, I do believe, to last month, 11 this month. And we do expect some alarms to go up with the startup of furnaces and that, CO alarms and that going off also. We do also run those alarms.
Okay.
I have a question. With the increased number of calls, how is your staffing? Are you going to, when will the numbers get high enough where you're going to request increased staffing?
Right now I could not answer that because I have to look at it.
Okay.
With the staffing on days right now with the two full-time person, people and the deputy chief Anderson there, we are able to respond. And our night calls, right now we can cover it. I do believe we will be asking for an increase, some kind of duty off, duty crew or something within the next year or two weeks.
Thank you.
Wasn't that number like 700 Rodney, that's when it, you could kick in a duty crew if you wanted it? Or talk about it or?
Yeah, we could start talking about it. And that, right now, it's like I said, we are able to get enough, enough right now to cover our needs. But I, like I said, I'm not for sure when I'll have to look at, start looking at extra staffing.
Thank you.
Yeah, because I've got some things about burnout here, you know. You've got this many calls and you're looking at over 900, there's a possibility some good burnout on some of these guys and, you know, I don't know what it's going to take, but, you know.
Yeah, our firefighters right now are required to do 30% of their shift calls and that. Right now it is probably 12 to 15 calls a month for day people. And the night crews, because the city gets split in half, comes down to six to eight calls per month. That's to do 30%. We would like them to do more, but to do their 30%, that's how many calls they have to do.
And I just want to say thanks Rodney, you stepped right in when Mark left and it hasn't missed a beat. Everything seems to be going pretty smooth, so thank you.
Thank you.
Including your report, 3x3x3, I was waiting.
No, thanks guys. Is there any other questions?
Is there any other question from the council?
There's a gentleman in the back.
How many people are actually on your staff that are titled chief that get paid monthly?
Right now we have myself as a full-time chief and we have a deputy chief right now. We do not have any district chiefs right now.
Any other questions? Rodney, thank you. Thanks Chief.
Thank you.
Item number five consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda and I'd like to pull item A, G, H and I.
What is it, A what?
A and G, H and I.
I'll second it.
I'm going to refer to them all at once.
Second, all those in favor, so the remaining ones, B, C, D, E, F and J, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes, item A.
Okay, I have a question on that bill's list. I always have a question on a bill's list. And this is the police page. We had a parentheses credit of 50,000, what is that for? Because I know we're cutting the CSO, but I didn't think that was coming till next year.
That's correct, there were some issues with the CSO service this year that the sheriff's department couldn't meet due to manpower requirements. So this is the credit they gave us back for that reason.
Oh, okay, got it. All right, with that I'll make a motion to approve item A of the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made second discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes. Item G.
All right, I'm going to do G, H and I. These are resignations of Parks Commission EDA member and firefighter and I just want to thank all of them for their service. I totally appreciate everything they've done, some were volunteers, some were paid, but I really appreciate all of them. So I just want to thank them and with that I'll approve item.
I'd like to add something to what Suzanne said. These are all long time people that have served with us for a very long time and their knowledge is going to be greatly missed. And we appreciate all they've done over the years.
My same thoughts. I've known Stacy's when I was a liaison to the Parks and that was, you know, about eight years ago. Dan Butler, well, what can you say, he's been an asset. He cares about the city, he cares about the city, he cares about the business, he cares about everybody. And Dan Minan, he had 15 years in the fire department, it's just that he works for indoc and it's hard to make that 30% each quarter, so. I just want to thank all three of these individuals, they were assets to the city and they did a lot of good things for the city.
Absolutely. I know Dan was a great encourager in recruiting people to volunteer for the city.
Yep.
Dan Butler was a great recruiter and a great mentor to a lot of us.
Yep.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve items G, H and I in the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made second discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Say pass, G, H and I.
Good night gentlemen, thank you.
Do we have the supplemental bill list?
Oh, yeah, it's on there, G, it was approved. No new business, how about the department reports, November work meeting?
Thank you Tim. Our November work meeting is scheduled for November the 7th, 2022 at 7:00 PM. The following items are recommended for discussion. The Sunrise River WMO joint powers agreement amendment and funding formula. The American Rescue Plan Act broadband grant application. Code enforcement report and some updates on the Electrical Inspection Service contract that we discussed at our last meeting. So these are the items that staff would recommend to put on there, if there are any others, let me know and we'll add those to the list.
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda for November work meeting.
Second.
Motion made second discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Jack, you've got an agenda for the work meeting.
All right.
Let me see. Item eight, staff reports.
The only thing I have is just to remind everybody that absentee voting is going on currently. We have two absentee judges that'll be working this to make it smoother for everybody and get everybody in and out quicker if you want to come and vote early. Also, it'll be going on every day. On Saturday, November the 5th, we'll be open from 10 to 3 for absentee voting. And we'll be open from 8 to 5 on Monday, November 7th for absentee voting. So if you have any questions or need any information on that, just give us a call and we have the staff here to accommodate you and get you in and out as quickly as possible.
Thank you Jack.
I have a question regarding that. If somebody wants a ballot mailed to their house, like their senior and can't get out, how do they do that?
They'll have to request that and then they'll have to have an affidavit signed, but I'll get you that information.
Perfect.
Or you can go on the Anoka County Elections website and request an absentee ballot and it'll come in mail to you.
Well, can I do it for somebody? Because they don't know how to do that.
You can.
I don't know, can you?
Not sure.
I don't know if you can request one for somebody else.
The answer might be on their website.
I'll check it out, thank you.
Well, we can check it out and I can let you know too.
Thank you.
Suzanne?
All right. I want to talk about a couple of things. One is the unfair campaign practices with the signs being stolen. Because a city employee, I think they work at the fire department, was found with our sign in their trunk. And the police were called and they said that, well first, inside of the work area, they claimed that supervisor asked if anybody had the signs and they shook their head. And then the police were called, went to the trunk of their car, the person came out and they said, oh, I was late for work. So I just grabbed this one. When they're leaving other people's signs, so they can't say it's in areas that are not, they're not supposed to be because, public areas. Because they're leaving other, everybody else's signs, they're taking my signs, Tim Miller's signs, Jim Smith's signs and Kevin Lewis's.
Where was the sign at?
Honestly, I don't know. I don't remember, he told me that I don't remember. But there's a picture of this guy, he's a city employee, and he's not the only one. And this guy, I think it was Tim Miller who found his sign in his trunk. Might have been Kevin Lewis, I can't remember. Anyways, they went. Somebody else that was in the area said there was a bunch of Jim Smith's sign behind this city building. And Jim Smith went over there and the signs had, by that time, gone by the time he got there. This is unfair campaign practices. People are going to court right now for similar situations. It could only take one person to file this with the county, with the court, administrative court system. So that being said, my next question is, I want to ask something about what Christine Dahlin said. If there were lies in an affidavit, is that a crime? Is that wrong? I know, we know it's wrong, but is it a crime? And I think that's for the city attorney.
Well, just to briefly address that, number one, we certainly don't believe that there was anything in that affidavit that was incorrect. So that's number one. Number two, a judge did review it and grant a search warrant, that search warrant was granted. I believe that it was placed in the criminal file because there was no other place to place the search warrant. And every document within Anoka County needs to be filed to a case. There's no case associated with administrative search warrants, which was why they chose to associate it. And that was an administrative choice on behalf of Anoka County to associate it with that file. It was applied for, it was granted. Now, if somebody does make a false statement on it, it would constitute perjury. We would not submit something that we believe to be false to a court. We would not do that. We do not, Mr. Schmitz would not sign his name to something that was false in my opinion. So, you know, I, obviously allegations are made, we don't believe they have any basis in fact, but allegations were made, so.
Okay, that said, that affidavit had something on there about her having renters, which if I were a judge, I would approve it too if I thought renters were being, having them forced to live in a terrible environment. But she hasn't had a renter in there ever, she hasn't had anybody in there since 2015 besides herself.
When the incident was first reported, it was reported to us that it was renters that were injured and the renters or the people that were occupying the structure called it.
And that went to port two and was dismissed or they lost because they were fighting. The men and women who were living there were fighting, that's why they were injured.
But you just said there weren't any renters living there.
There were people living there for free, they were not renters, she had to evict them because they wouldn't leave after all that junk and stuff and all those violations.
There's really no legal difference between someone who's a tenant of property and someone who's renting a property. You know, just by the simple fact that somebody had to go through the eviction process, that implies that there was a landlord-tenant relationship. Legally speaking, there's no term that I can think of as a renter. Minnesota identifies these things pursuant to statute as landlords and tenants.
So if I let somebody come and spend the night at my house and you never want to leave, they're suddenly a renter?
No, they're a tenant and you would have to evict them. Yes, I mean honestly, it happens all the time where people invite somebody to stay for a week, somebody's hard up and then they actually have to evict the person who's crashing on their couch. It's not an uncommon thing. I have had to do something similarly myself, not in my own situation, but on behalf of a client of mine, I've had to evict squatters before. So it is a landlord-tenant relationship, yes.
Okay, so is there a difference in the legal terms between squatter, tenant, renter?
I don't believe, I think those are more common phrases. As far as Minnesota's concerned, there's landlords and there's tenants and that's it, so.
Okay, well with that, I'm going to wish everybody a wonderful, safe Halloween. I want all the drivers out there to please, please slow down, you all drive way too fast and I don't care what road you're on, go 20 miles an hour slower than what you usually do. Keep those little ones safe, thank you, that's all I have.
Brian? I attended the EDA meeting. And let me pull up my packet here. We had the introduction of Anoka County's new economic development director that replaced Sam Markham. And I'm looking for his name, Gregory Fram Gillis, I believe, is how you pronounce it. EDA spent about an hour talking with him, getting to know him and he updated us on broadband. Because similar to East Bethel, the Anoka County did their own study. And the solution that they actually came up with was a fixed wireless for blanket coverage of the county that would meet the minimum speeds set by federal standards. I believe that's 100 download, 20 up. What they are now looking for, I believe that they have applied for a federal grant for about $4 million to accomplish this. And they are waiting on response for that. And then EDA had their own discussion with broadband grant review. And the couple areas that we are looking to help out our citizens by working along with midco. With grant funds through, a grant through Anoka County to put in internet lines. We're, with the knowledge that Anoka County is looking to do this fixed wireless, this would also cover East Bethel. The discussion was, should we actually pursue putting in more lines and spending money if this blanket coverage will happen? The catch 22 is we can't really move forward unless we know that the county got their grant for $4 million to do their fixed wireless.
Must they want us like 133 applications or something?
Yeah, so it's a little bit of hurry up and wait in this scenario, unfortunately. So I presume that we'll be talking more about this in the coming month or two, but I wanted to update everyone on that. And tomorrow night we'll be planning zoning, 7 o'clock, I'll be attending that, giving my report. Otherwise, hope everyone has a safe and happy Halloween and I'll be handing out Smarties.
Smarties, yum. Go to Brian's house.
Not just one, there's.
Handfuls?
Maybe not handfuls, but I'm generous. That's all I have.
Wanda?
Our Parks Commission meeting unfortunately was canceled, we did not have a quorum, so it is rescheduled for next month. And it would have fallen on election. And it would have fallen on election night, so it's been moved to November fifteenth at six-thirty. And I want to let everybody know that we made the Conexus Energy. I don't know if anybody saw this, but Panagol, the new Panagol building down in the commercial park has solar on the roof and it made the back with pictures and everything else. So it doesn't say what percentage of it is run on solar, but we had a green building down in the commercial park. And lastly, I want to thank all of our residents who took the time last week to come out and listen to the candidates and be here, provide feedback to us. We had a busy week last week. We were here, we were at the chamber, and we were at the senior center. And I'd like to thank all the candidates for taking the time out of their schedules to come and appear and say what needed to be said. And don't forget to vote November eighth. That's all I have.
Thanks, Wanda. Last Wednesday, Jack and I were in a Zoom meeting with the Sunrise Watershed. We're trying to figure out a new financial formula that'll fit all four cities. It's a dogfight, so you're going to be getting paperwork for the work meeting. We got it down to two formulas, so look at them real closely and give us some good feedback, please. And yesterday, I partake with the Fire Auxiliary. We cleaned up Highway sixty-five from two hundred twenty-first to two hundred thirty-seventh and I want to thank everybody for attending that. And today's firefighting class was medical lifting and moving of patients. And finally, too, I'd like to wish everybody a happy and safe Halloween. And with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made second discussion. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.